Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hole Meeting for October 17, 2023. I call this meeting to order and again ask the clerk, please call the roll. The deputy clerk, please call the roll.
Dany?
Yes, sir.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
And President Wallace is here, too.
Oh, sorry.
President Wallace.
Um, [laughing].
First item we have this year, I think, actually, of the 10 years, I think this is the first time Lauren has ever missed a meeting.
I don't remember.
10 years.
You wanted to come in here and be said.
Yeah. Wow. We gotta give her a prize. Building and zoning committee chairman Gunstein.
Mr. Wallace, tonight we have two items for discussion. The first item tonight is 1027 Vailwood. The petitioner is requesting a 20, 28-foot variance, variation from the 45-foot required rear yard to bring the house in conformance and allow construction of a three-season room addition. This represents a 62% reduction in the required rear yard and exceeds the maximum 20% variation. This case will require a vote of five trustees and the village president and four trustees to grant this variation. With that, I will turn it over to Kristi Stone.
So, this lot is an unusual case. When this house was originally built, there was not a required rear yard in our zoning ordinance. And this house is half, this lot is half the depth of all the surrounding properties. So, half the house is currently non-conforming. The addition will replace a larger patio, so the amount of impervious surface in the rear yard is actually going down. She does still meet the impervious requirement. Planning and zoning recommended approval unanimously.
Any questions?
I didn't have any.
No questions. With that, we will send it on to the village board for a vote.
All right.
Next item we have is AGI Trucking, Brewster Creek, business lot 15. The petitioner is requesting a site plan review for the proposed 15,900-square-foot office facility for AGI trucking. The site contains 36 parking spaces for office and warehouse employees as well as visitors, which this meets zoning ordinance requirements. There are 62 trailer and semi-truck parking spaces. The petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow outdoor trucking, trailer storage. And with that, I will turn it over to Kristi Stone.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. This is very similar to a project that you reviewed at the last meeting as well. They have, because this does abut Munger Road, they have put in a row of evergreen trees to screen it as much as possible from the roadway. Staff is requesting this be forwarded to the planning and zoning commission to conduct the public hearing.
Any questions?
I didn't have any on that either.
Send it on to the planning and zoning. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Community and economic development committee chairman Gansey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item, an updated social media policy for the public. Just kind of going through this, in 2017, the village introduced a social media policy for the public which established guidelines and comments restrictions for its social media accounts. I'm gonna turn this over to Julie Tappendorf from Ansel Glink to explain the updated changes.
A fresh face in the room tonight.
Thank you. So, we had looked at the social media policy that was done about six years ago, and in the last probably five or six years, there's been a significant amount of court cases, both in this area and across the country, about social media, particularly in the area of the First Amendment. We've seen a lot of cases that have found policies to be unlawful and unconstitutional because, comment policies for government entities, because they violate the First Amendment. We've also seen actions, a lot of cases where government bodies across the country have removed negative and critical comments from government social media sites and have been found in violation of the First Amendment. So, with that legal background, I took a look at the social media policy and made some recommended changes, which I forwarded on to staff. And I can just go through a couple of them. Some of the changes in the beginning were more to modernize some of the lingo. You know, we think about what we used to call the World Wide Web and some of the terminology. Some of the social media sites that were around in 2007 aren't even around anymore or they've changed names. So, we tried to make this, make the definitions section a little more streamlined and a little more generic, so you won't have to update this every five years as social media platforms come and go. Some of the other changes, I think probably the most significant changes that I had recommended were to the comment moderation section. So, government social media sites are subject to the First Amendment. They're considered some sort of a public forum, either designated or limited. And all that means is that the government cannot discriminate on speech that's posted or, say, in a room in a city council or in a park district. Where there's a public forum, you can't discriminate based on somebody's viewpoint. That's viewpoint discrimination. And that does apply to social media. There's a lot of cases out there, including some from the U.S. Supreme Court, that say that government social media sites, once you open it up, you've opened up a public forum, and then you can't censor speech or ban people for speaking just because you don't like their message. But that doesn't mean you can't restrict or regulate some speech. So, speech like threats of violence, commercial speech that's not related to what the purpose of the government site is, libelist or slanderous speech, comments that promote discrimination based on somebody's protected class, obscenity or pornography. Those sorts of speech are not protected under the First Amendment, so you can restrict it. And so, a lot of the comment moderation section is basically putting the public on notice, this is the type of speech that we will not allow on Bartlett's social media sites and that we reserve the right to remove it. And if you repeatedly post this type of speech, we could ban or block you. And that's been upheld across the country in cases. If somebody is speaking non-protected speech, then we can regulate it. If it's a protected speech, and one of the highest protections that we have in the U.S. is the right to criticize the government, not to threaten violence, but to criticize and negative speech, to present complaints that, which you weren't prohibiting previously. Couple of things that we made changes to, there was language in here that prohibited profanity, but actually, the U.S. Supreme Court protects profanity as protected speech. But the social media platforms actually filter a lot of that out. We'll leave it to them. We're not going to filter it out. We'll let the Facebooks and the Twitter slash X filter some of that, that type of speech out. But the list of prohibited speech is consistent with the current state of the law. Can I promise that there might be cases that come out? You know, we'll keep an eye on this. If we see a case that, that has changed some of this, we would suggest other changes. Couple of other things that we added, about the removal, about the banning, that we don't have to provide notice to a user before we delete their comment. That's not required under the First Amendment. If you engage in unprotected speech, the government doesn't have to allow that. We can remove that. We also added some language about that there's no expectation of privacy. If people post their personal information on Bartlett's social media sites, we, we state that, you know, there's no expectation of privacy. This could be released under FOIA. This could be, you know, this is an open government site. It also includes some language that says that people that post on Bartlett's sites, that there's no endorsement, that doesn't mean that the village endorses their comment or their speech. That is their speech, and we have language in here that, that states that, that that's not a, an endorsement, a village endorsement. And, let me see what else. Oh, and the last is just to state that this policy is, is putting commenters, people that post on the village's sites, on notice that, that they're subject to these rules and that if they violate them repeatedly, that we can take action to, to ban or block them. It also prohibits spam and viruses and, and sort of other non-protected speech. I think that kind of takes care of it. I'm happy to answer any questions about some of the legal context or any specific provisions in the draft policy.
What is our process for monitoring and enforcing that?
Yeah, that might be a better question for staff who I know is, we typically recommend that there be some moderation of that, so, yeah.
Our staff, we go more on the very, very conservative end of that, of last resort for something like that, but we have to, as part of this policy, we do have to take down why it was removed and, and take note of that.
Asking who monitors?
Oh, that would be all, all of our social media teams, so that would be Gabby, our police, police team who's monitoring that as well.
And I don't know if Chris may want to speak to this, but we also have a few programs that we use to help us monitor the archive social and, and a few non-human things that we use to help us monitor for speech and things like, the archive social picks up a lot of the commercial advertising stuff, it'll pull it out right away.
The other thing I'll say, too, I work with a lot of communities, both here and across the country. I do a lot of social media trainings. And you guys have a really good, engaging, informational social media presence. You know, there are large communities across the country that wish that they had the engagement that you have. So, it, it's a good position to be in, and the policy is just intended to make sure that, you know, we're keeping it legal, that the, that the moderation of this is, is consistent and that users are on notice if you post. Here are the rules that, that are in place for that.
Fantastic.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman Gansey. And finally, lands committee chairman Laporte.
I've got an agenda item here with regards to the 2023 property levy tax options. The village board discussed the proposed tax levy at the October 3 committee meeting and asked that more information be presented at the next committee meeting, committee meeting for additional discussion. There was concern about the estimated increase of 4.35% to the village's portion of the property tax bill due to the increase in the police pension levy amount of $478,439 to $2,682,060, up from $2,203,621. Included in the memo is a levy example that would keep the village's portion of the tax bill the same as last year, and an example that would show the increase in the village's portion of the tax bill by about 2.38%. And I'll hand it over to Todd for additional comment.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think you understand, I just want to make sure that everybody's, I didn't mention anything in the summary about the adding 750,000 to the general levy and how that's being offset by the closing of the Brewster Creek TIF and shouldn't affect the actual property taxes or the amount that residents pay. I just want to make sure everybody understands that and is clear on that, because we, I kind of brushed over that part. Is there any questions on that part, the closing of the TIF and the increased general levy? Okay.
So, can you give a little bit, like, just the closing version of what that means?
Okay, when the Brewster Creek TIF closes, right now, the increment, the, the property tax, the assessed value that has increased during the development of the TIF, all of that money, all of that taxable value goes back into the TIF fund to be reused or to pay off development costs. So, when the TIF closes, that taxable value that's just going to fund the TIF, that will now be going to fund all of the prop, all of the taxing districts, the village, the arc, the fire. So, that money gets, I mean, that assessed value gets moved onto that role. So, the districts can increase their levy to pick up that portion of assessed value that's being added to their, to their roles. So, as they increase their levy, the levy is spread out over all the taxable value and the rate or what each house or property pays, if everything else is equal, of course, would, would stay the same even though the levy goes up, because now there's more taxable property.
There's more tax dollars in the kitty, basically.
Yeah, yep, more. So...
But not for, just until it's spent, right?
Well, it's an ongoing thing. The, the increase in EAV is constant now.
Yeah, that's being added, that, that got added as taxable property, and that will continue every year. So, that additional taxable value will, will be on our rules going forward. The TIF is closed, the property's moved onto other regular taxable assessed value going forward. So, then what we're, that's why we're focusing on the increase to the, the pension levy, because that's the portion that's going to be affecting the property taxes. So, our proposed levy, total, the total calculated required contribution is just over 3 million. We were proposing to raise the levy to 2,682,000, so that left off, to come out of the general fund, the 319,000 that we had used out of the general fund the prior year, when we didn't increase the levy at all, we, so we're, we had originally proposed to still have 319,000 come out of the general fund, we'd increase the levy by the 478,000. That would be about 4.3% increase to the, to our levy, which is where we were coming up with the $40, $45 for somebody that typically pays about $1,000 a year in, towards the village portion of the property tax bill. So, one of the, what I tried to show here was different levels, how much, so we could go all the way down to no increase on the property taxes if we, again, took the full amount of the additional for the police pension contribution. So, if we kept it at 2.2 million and the remaining came out of the general fund, that would leave our property tax levy about the same. Or we could do somewhere in the middle, either way. And then in the, on the back, I went over some of our fund balance policies, where we're, where we're currently at, how much we have in our capital improvement plan, planning to use that surplus in the next few years, and then how much we have over and above, beyond that, it's about a little over $2 million. So, I don't know where you are at as far as...
Well, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we, I think the first idea is kind of crazy, because if we don't increase what we're funding to a very increasing police pension fund, we're kicking the can down the road.
Right. Last year, when we didn't increase it at all, we said, okay, we're not increasing it for the 300, but next year, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more. So, we're at next year and, and it's more.
It's more.
And so, right, we're, this is a real amount that needs to be paid, and the more money that's in the fund helps to support the pensions that, that will, will be paid down, down the road.
So, I, for one, think that the, the option you have here in box number one is, is absolutely not plausible, where we're not actually contributing to the pension fund at all. I think the first box you have, is that your original, your original...
Yes, on the first, on the first page is the original proposal with the increase to the pension.
And then you have not contributing an additional amount to the police pension at all, which is not plausible. That doesn't make any sense to me. And then the third box is like a happy median?
That's the, right, that's the median, so that would be raising the pension 250,000, and then we would be using 547,000 out of the general fund. That would be the 2.3 or so percent increase. So, instead of the 40 to $45, it would be in the 20 to $25. That's, that's a conservative estimate on that much, on, on that amount. I'm not, everybody's taxes are a little bit different, but that's, that's kind of a ballpark estimate.
So, if we follow that scenario, where does that put us next year? Ask, you know, okay.
Yeah, if we follow the scenario of increasing to 250,000, so 547 would be coming out of the general fund, we're, we're looking at usually, depending on what the stock market does and things like that, so, we saw an increase of 319,000, and then we saw an increase of almost 500,000. And so, it, it, there's a lot of factors involved, but part of that had to do with the, the, the union agreement was approved with, with amounts that were over what we had in our assumptions. So, that's a little bit of catch-up on that, a little bit of catch-up on the stock market. You know, there's a lot of factors, but it has been going up over the last few years, probably again, in the 300,000 range, based on the last few years.
I know a lot of the numbers go into this actuary role, the number of people retiring, the amount that they're gonna need for pension, what, what our percentage needs to be by 2040, is that the year? Is it 2040?
Right, yeah, right, right now, we do the calculation based on 100% funded at 2040.
100% funded, but it mandates 90, doesn't it?
The state, the state minimum requirement is based on 90% funded at 2040.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's impossible, like you're trying to describe, to figure out the exact numbers, because you don't know what the market's gonna do. Obviously, a lot of this money is in the market.
Yeah, there's a...
You're not for sure.
Lot of assumptions.
How many more people we're gonna have retire, but, and...
Things I've been hearing...
Preserving that.
2024 and 2025 are gonna be rough, economically speaking. So, what can we do now to protect us 2024, 2025, or what should we do now? Because they're not talking, they're talking worse than a recession.
Yeah, I am, I am not an economist.
I wouldn't put any faith in the stock market. I guess that's kind of where I'm going.
So, to answer your question, one is that we don't get in too dig, deep too dig of a hole now. Secondly, is what we have done for the past few years, when we've had some tough economic times, is we make sure that we have the table set for development, that we're doing the things that we need to do to keep that momentum going. We need to take a hard look at our capital projects plan, you know, assessing, and you've done this consistently, looking at projects, not only when they are in the capital improvements plan for those five years, but also looking at that first year that comes up to you and when we're doing those bids, to say, is this a reasonable build, bid? Is this something that we can tweak? Is there something that we can change? So, keeping an eye on those capital projects is an important thing to do. And then, of course, our annual budget process and keeping our, our operating expenses reasonable. And, and that's all through the budget review.
Yeah.
I'm not one for increase in taxes, but what the village is asking for relative to what the other taxing districts, like the school district and, and some of the other, I'm not, again, I don't like to increase taxes, but if this protects us in the long run, $20 versus $40 is kind of splitting hairs, in my, my opinion. 63% of my tax bill goes to the school district, you know, what's Bartlett, 10% of the tax bill?
About nine and a half.
And if we're supposed to run efficiently and, and to your point, we're, we're putting this money towards projects that are gonna cover five years, I don't know, maybe, maybe we find a happy medium.
So, previously, Kevin mentioned the LGDF and what that could do.
That would fix all of our problems right now.
It sounds like a lot of communities are in the same boat, right? They're trying to fund their police pensions and looking at levies. So, is there, I guess, is it our representatives who are trying to fight for LGDF? How can we help impact that?
So, if you recall, last year, there was a big push with both Northwest Municipal Conference and DuPage Mariner Managers. And each municipality put together a fact sheet for our legislators. That was very impactful for them. We hand-delivered those to our legislators, and we had special meetings with all of our representatives on this issue particularly, pointing out what Todd has, you know, reported out tonight. Here, here's the, here's the 10% increment that, you know, we had before, you know...
Which is statutorily, the actual number.
Chipping away and chipping away. And here's what the difference of that, those dollars are and the projects that we're not doing in our communities because of them. And that was a, a great push. It was somewhat effective. And what they have told us is that in Springfield, we cannot take our foot off the pedal, and we have to keep that message, keep pounding, keep pounding, keep pounding. It is a Sisyphean task. You know, we may get a percent here or a percent there, but the minute we stop yelling about it, they're on to other things. So, the, both, both our conferences work in tandem on this. We get the full force of all the COGS and their resources, and really taking that as a regional fight has been effective and efficient for us.
So, just to put that in perspective, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Madam Administrator. Right now, we're at $1.4 million light on what's, we're supposed to get as a municipality according to statute. But I can tell you for sure, don't depend on that, because the leadership down in Springfield doesn't care. They don't even care. They were laughing about the actual acronym, so that's not probably ever gonna come around. So, one of the things that we need, we keep pushing on that front, because that would actually, we wouldn't even be having this discussion right now if that was the case. Keep pushing on that front, but I also want to, want to know for sure that if we do this compromise, I know that Todd puts a ton of time into this, we do this compromise where we, we don't go the full amount that we feel like would make the pension, police pension whole, but we kind of split it in half, is that physically, fiscally responsible for us this year and what is it gonna look like in the next couple of years to try to play catch-up again? If we don't have any additional funding sources and the market is down and Springfield doesn't seem to want to share any of the cannabis or any of the other new, exciting revenue sources that they have?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, we are gonna put the money into the pension fund. The question is where's...
Where does it come from, yeah?
It's gonna come from the levy or it's gonna come from our general fund surplus.
That's where the fiscal responsibility comes in for village purposes.
Yeah, there's no, it's, there's no question, are we gonna fund the pensions? We, we have, we have to fund the pensions. We've always funded pensions. That's when we, when we meet with the moving rating agencies, we say, we fund the pensions all the time based on 100% funded, not the state's 90% funded.
Yeah.
And that's part of why we're one of the top-rated municipalities. But as far as going forward, we're, we're behind. I mean, so we, we went 319,000 down last year. This year, we would be going down another 500,000 on an annual basis. So, that's accumulating, so that, that would be, you know, 800,000 out of the general fund, then the next year, let's say we can raise it 250,000, we would still be down at least 250,000 plus any, any kind of increase to that. So, that's why we originally proposed the increasing at 400 and some thousand. We thought that was a compromise, but if, that's up to, that's up to...
Historically, we've pretty well maintained the levy, correct?
We have maintained the general levy historically. We've increased the pension levy and, and we've increased the debt service levy.
But with regards to what the taxpayer pays on a $400,000... But with regards to what the taxpayer pays on a $400,000 house, this would be the first time that they'd see something along the lines of 40 or $45. Historically, it's been around 18 to 20, or what would be the number historically? And when, and when do we see the spikes?
Kind of a loaded question, or...
Yeah.
What goes to the village, or what goes to the police pension fund, which is basically tied at the hip.
Yeah, they're, they, they go together.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have, I know on the presentation from the last meeting, I, I had all the, the levy history for the last 10 years, and, and, and how it's gone up. I know that, um, when we did the bonds for the police station, that, that added about 100 or so thousand to the, to the, um, to the debt service levy a year, um, I think it was, I, I, I can't do, I don't want to do those figures in my head, because I'll be wrong again, but, we, we have been increasing. I know the pension levy has, has doubled in the last 10 years, so...
What percentage is the state funding?
What percentage is the state funding?
They're not funding us at 10%, so what are they providing?
6.1.
6.1?
Right, 6.1?
6.1.
Yeah, we're going at 0.1%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had asked for eight, um, on the, on the...
Yeah, for those of you not in the know, Todd's better at this than me, but that's the actual, according to the Illinois Constitution, the amount that every municipality is supposed to get their portion of the state income taxes, and that's our, should be our portion, correct?
Yeah, when, when they increased the rate, or the, or the individual tax rate to 5%, they kept the village at the 3%, the village is at 3%, and, and the 2% increase went all to the state.
Yeah.
That's kind of how they, that's kind of how they figured that.
Yeah.
So we're still getting 10% of the original 3%, I think.
They're assuming that there is no inflation in Bartlett.
So if, if we raise it to $40 or $45 this year, if you had a crystal ball, what would not, are we going to raise it 40 and $45 next year? Or are we out of the woods, or we're in a better position? If we go high this year, can we go low next year? I, I...
Not a variables.
Out of the hole.
Oh, you're still getting, so the $45 increase was still going to keep us 319,000 short of the, of the calculated contribution?
That's because we didn't raise anything, or we didn't raise it last year.
That's because, right, we...
Because we didn't do anything last year, we're paying the price this year.
Yeah, it's like Kevin said, we're just kicking, kicking the can down the road.
I know we are moving more people to tier two, but there's issues with the tier two, where they're going to be, you know, we thought maybe we'd see some relief there, or we'd see some relief where they pushed it out from 2040 to 2050, which isn't really a great idea either, but it would give you some relief. But then, there's some issues with tier two, and having to increase those benefits, because they're not...
And it, it's, it's the variables that you don't know about. So it's better be, be prepared than it is to have all of these tier-two increases come along, and then all of a sudden, we drop down to 70% total funded.
What happens if, in the worst case, like, a capital project couldn't be funded, or one of the ones you mentioned that were surprises? And where does, where do those funds come from? Or like the ashboards, would that just not have happened?
If we didn't have reserves, you mean? Um, well, hopefully, that wouldn't happen. But in, in, let's say, um, you know, our roads are crumbling, that's where you start bonding, and you start taking it out of the other pocket of debt, um, debt service, if it's something like, you know, big and substantial, I mean, um...
And then you get too many bonds on your books, and then your Moody rating goes down, and then it gets more and more expensive. That's a real fun road to travel.
And, you know, the thing with reserves is, you know, our conservative policy has been, you know, we, we always, it's kind of our guiding principle, is don't use one-time money for expense, use one-time money for a one-time expense. So, you know, your capital projects are one-time expense, you know, you're going to, you know, definitive project, project, not ongoing operating.
I, I hate seeing taxes increase than anybody, on top of everything else that's happening, but, State of Illinois is notorious for kicking the can down the road, and I don't think the Village of Bartlett wants to be in that same category.
I agree.
Again, uh...
We should look at this as a fiscally responsible decision, and look at the capital budgets and everything for next year, and see what needs to happen, so that we don't have to do this again.
Yep.
So we don't have to re, raise it, especially if we're seeing our interest rates on our bonds, and, and all of our income going down, we can look at that as a last source of, you know, slashing costs, so...
Yeah, I don't know about you guys, but I'm in favor of, um, the levy as he proposed at the beginning, so I don't know what your opinions are.
Yeah, it's basically...
That's how I feel about it.
As proposed at the first time, or the...
It's on the first page here.
Yeah.
I proposed it.
I'm sorry, I want to be in a position where we have to increase it again next year.
Well, and we will be, we will be, if, if we meet, if we...
We will be anyway.
Don't go with it as proposed originally, then we will be in the hole next year. We're in the hole this year, just not as much.
I think I asked at the last meeting that staff looks at the budget, and I know we're halfway through the, the fiscal year, um, to see what we can cut, to not have the impact as much, and I don't see any of that information in front of me, so I'm not in favor of raising taxes, because I think there are things in our budget that we can cut, that would lessen the impact on our residents. So, I just don't see that in front of me, like I requested at the last meeting, so I can't vote to raise taxes.
I'm sorry, that was my error, I didn't catch that.
We can...
It's kind of a, what comes first, the egg or the chicken, though, Trustee Hopkins, because you budget on X amount of dollars that you're expecting to bring in, and then you pass a levy, um, that you're attempting to pay for what you budgeted. So it's never an exact science, I've never really been happy about how you have to budget a village, but it's tricky. And, um, one of the things we know for sure is that we want to make sure that Public Works has the money that they need to run, Police Department has money that they need to run, you know, those are the basic, basic entities that we have.
And we did have that opportunity in April to go through the budget and slash things, and we did, and there were a lot of things we couldn't slash. So the, the pension is, is the wild card, as we discussed in the last meeting, and we don't have that number in April, so I understand where you're coming from, I don't want to raise a tax either, but we've already looked at the budget, we already justified what was approved, what wasn't approved, it's time to move forward. All we can do is, the next budget period, to your point, make sure that things are looked at a little sharper, so that when the pension hits this time of year, that we're ready for it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with you, and we routinely, throughout the year, amend the budget, we routinely have ordinances in front of us, and typically, it's to raise the budget amount, sometimes it is to decrease it. And I have a hard time looking at the residents, knowing that we have business welfare out there, and we're giving $50,000 to a business, but we're going to raise your taxes $50. So I think, unfortunately, if we're going to be raising taxes on the residents, we have to cut business welfare. Unfortunately, it's not, it's not appropriate at this time to, to do that. I mean, we routinely change...
I'm assuming you're, you mean the BETA program?
That's exactly what I mean.
And that's about 1% of our budget?
So, how much money is coming from gaming right now?
Sorry?
How much money is coming from gaming?
Uh, what, what did we say, 400, 400?
400, and how much is the average 40 or $50 going to impact? 450,000?
And you want to ask how many residents would not be excited about having more brewing downtown now? Do you want to ask how many residents would not be excited about having Aldi coming into town? Do you want to ask how many residents are not excited about all the new businesses that are in town? It's a give and a take, Trustee Hopkins.
I...
It's a give and a take, you don't get stuff without giving something.
That's, that's if you knew that the BETA program wasn't going to bring them in in the first place. I think we gave sales tax rebates to both of them. So not only did they get, if you really want to discuss this, we can, but I don't think a $50,000 investment for a BETA is going to change a multimillion-dollar deal. I, I, I don't see it. If someone's going to come in and actually, more brewing purchased the property, before, I think we even had a BETA program.
No, I didn't.
So, 50 grand is not going to make or break more brewing, it's not. And if you think that, I, I, I don't even know what the, I don't even know how to respond to that. It's not.
I just want to point out that of the 400,000, the BETA only has a certain amount allocated to pay out, and it is not the full 400,000. Is that correct? The BETA is capped at 200?
250,000.
250,000.
So that is in the budget that we bring for the earmarking each year?
Difference of the 400...
And then the remainder is in the general fund?
So the difference of the 250 to 400, or whatever the increase in gaming revenue that comes into the village, and it's increasing hourly, basically, um, continues to stay in the general fund, but the money that's taken out for BETA is allocated, is 250,000, max, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with the term business welfare, I don't agree with anything that you said right there, if you want to build up your downtown, I don't agree with any of that, at all. And, and you can, you can argue as much as you want, but how, how did you like our downtown eight years ago?
I'm not arguing, I'm just making a point that we give $50,000...
We don't give it, we have to put money into it before they get anything. They put 200, hundreds of thousands of dollars into our downtown and building.
I'm just telling you my opinion, that I have a hard time looking at a resident.
You make it sound like we're giving them 50,000 to do whatever they want with, that's not the case, that is not the case. They have to put hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in order to qualify for $50,000.
I'm just telling you my opinion, that I have a hard time looking at a resident, saying, hey, we're raising your taxes, on average, $50, but we just gave this business 50 grand. That's just my opinion, and I don't agree with it, I don't agree with it, that's all. And I don't agree that more brewing wouldn't have come if they didn't get a BETA grant, I don't, when they're getting quite a bit in sales tax.
There's a half a dozen of companies, businesses that have improved the downtown area, not just that one.
I'm not saying that.
Dozens of them.
Where do we go from here?
We bring it to the board again, and we have a vote.
Okay.
On which option we're going to use.
All right, thank, if there's no more questions, then, uh, thank you, Paula, and thank you, Todd.
Anybody have any other comments? All right, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Laporte. The clerk, please call the roll. Deputy clerk, please call the roll. Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Ganzey?
Yes.
Gunstein?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.